Okay, you're ready to go.
I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second, please?
One second.
Okay. Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there anyone who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before us this evening?
I do not.
I do not? I do not?
No, I do not.
I do not. Okay, with that being said, I'd like the clerk to read the version of conduct during the meeting, please.
Okay. All right, the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general manners at the end of the meeting. Speakers cannot comment once speakers can comment once and each comment may go if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through the raised hand gesture. We are using Zoom, so attendees virtually. If you raise your hand, I can call on you. If you wish for me to ask the question, please put it in the Q and A. If it is put in the chat, I don't review the chat, so it'll be missed. Thank you. Okay, speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks for three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications to the Village Clerk at village@pittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time rule. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the Village Board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Thank you. Now we'll have the quiz on what she just read. Okay, let's start in. We have our department reports this evening, and we're going to start off with the building inspector report. We've all received a copy. It's Steve's report. Are there any questions for Steve?
Yeah, you went to court on 11/10 for 44 North Main Street, and a plan was created. Case adjourned as long as timeline was followed. First item on the list has not been accomplished. Is there any reason for concern about the not being accomplished? You're on it.
I think Jeff might want to talk about that when he comes in, because we're kind of at an impasse of what to do next.
Okay.
Okay, he'll be here in a few minutes, so maybe we can circle back and...
Is it attorney-client stuff, or is it just, we need Jeff?
I'm not sure how...
We'll have Jeff make the...
He's called back and forth on that, whether it has to go into a private session or not, but it is something we need to discuss. I'd like to have Jeff here.
Okay, and I had two other things really quickly. One of them, you said you conducted 45 fire safety inspections, so thanks for making that happen. And I noted the public comment that you don't remember having had them, so thank you for executing on that. I know we talked about that a couple months ago, and you had been behind on them, and now it seems like you're catching up.
Yeah, I'm not really... I do a third each year, but what's amazing is I found one business that had fire extinguishers from 87.
Oh, my word.
Oh, wow.
87.
So you have a good system where you're keeping track of the dates and when the next one is?
Yeah, I got a chart. I did fix it that time, I think.
Oh, good.
Can I follow up on the same item? I don't want to interrupt your flow, but you mind. So in the last, in the November meeting, I think it was, November 20th or so, you actually provided a copy of the chart, which I really appreciate. So in that, it seems like you end those are in the minute or in the packet, too, I believe that should be online, I think. At least that's public information at this point. It seems like we've gone through, in that one, it seems like you had gone through about half of the properties in the village. Is that about accurate, or...
No, I was almost about two-thirds. I was about 160 at that point. There's roughly 240, 242, something like that.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's kind of hard, because there's some that are now empty, some, I got some brand-new ones. But like you said, I've got about another 21 right now to do to make it so that everything's complete for all one-third each year I've been here over here.
Okay.
And can you just elaborate on why you do a third, a third, a third, so people understand just how that rolls because of the...
That's the code.
Right.
The code requires you to do at least a minimum business every three years. Any assembly has to be done every year.
Right.
An assembly is anything that conducts 50 or can contain 50 or more people.
Like a church, for example.
Church, larger restaurants, Jokel, Slum. So I listed the assemblies that are separate. Those get done every year. And I'm the last third of the businesses in the village. I've really taken time to get the context. We never had numbers for anybody associated with business, so on that list, and that's what I did last week, I really spent a lot of time updating all the contact numbers for the business, so we should have a comprehensive list of every business and a contact name and phone number for each business now.
Which is great, because this is now part of a database that will have it, will it all and update accordingly, you know, real time. So that's, thank you.
So I guess, just to make sure that we're really clear on this, since it seems like a big liability issue for not keeping up on the fire inspections. So you've got maybe less than a third or so, which could be accurate based on the spreadsheet. Do we have any, is it worthwhile to pull any records from prior to when you started the spreadsheet in 2020 or so, or do we just go on and finish the next, finish the rest?
I have no knowledge of, obviously, there, I mean, I went to the Pittsburgh Lumber. She's never, she said, nobody's ever been in here. So, I mean, there are no records of if things were done before. So, I mean, I'm really, I started fresh.
So you're creating essentially the new database and rolling forward?
Yeah, liability-wise, once I'm completed, we are covered as a village as far as requirements. Technically, prior to me being here and doing this, you weren't.
So is this spreadsheet sufficient documentation of when these occurred, or do we need to keep records somewhere else? Is there a certificate or anything like that that we need to keep on file?
I have a folder of other records that I have to keep, records of like elevator inspections every year, ancil system inspection every year, so I do have a folder of all that stuff as a separate in my desk. And actually, I want to convert, it's a Word document that I don't really like. I was showing them here the other day. Somehow, all the stuff came into the document, and I had to go through and start erasing.
That's internal and administrative, so we can sort that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, which we'll do.
Well, I'll make sure, and I can give an updated list at the next meeting of where things are at.
Great. I would appreciate it. It sounds like we're on the right track, and it's really important, so.
Okay.
So the other thing I just wanted to say real quick is that in your reports every time, you always mention you find projects on your tours of the village that are not compliant, and then the little note after them is that they are now compliant. And so I just wanted to give you kudos for having a can-do attitude on those situations and making sure everything's done right, and that, but that the end goal is to make them compliant, and that seems to be your end goal. So thank you for that.
I take the job as home.
Yeah. Well, and also, a big part of what you do is really educating our residents and helping them understand, you know, what's needed. So that's a good thing. Thank you.
I had some other questions to follow up with.
For Steve, sure.
So Steve, you had mentioned in your report as well, researching and answering questions about zoning and historical preservation requirements to property owners. And if possible, I would like to see what some of these questions and answers are as a board member, because I feel like it's, if we're getting a lot of questions about these things, maybe it's an educational opportunity to make sure that things are clear, or alternatively, if there are burdensome requirements, we may want to address those in terms of code. So I was just wondering if you could compile some of those questions that we've got from residents and answerees, and prepare those and present those to the board as a review of them.
I mean, if the board wishes me to. It's just, I mean, it's hard. That would be a hard thing to do, because a lot of times, it's just a question I answer right there. I don't take notes on it. You know what I mean? They ask me a question about, can I do this? Or I had a new resident come in the other day, and he just wanted an explanation of what he can do and not do. You know, so I had a five-minute conversation with the gentleman.
Many times, it's relative to an application. You know, there's specifics on an application, so you're just walking them through information. And we also have a little resource library here for residents. There's also resources online that we direct them to as well. So, you know, there's a full range of resources that are available in addition to you. So...
I appreciate that. I would like to learn a little bit more about this, Steve, if it wouldn't be too much trouble. If you could just keep a summary of what some of these verbal questions are.
I'll try and take notes.
Thank you. And if there are any emails, I'd really like to see those and some responses that we're sending out, to see if that's something we want to add to the website, or if they could lead to possible additions to code.
Okay.
The, related to the 44 North Main as well, and we can also talk about this when Jeff is here, but upon review of that material, I see that we've noted quite a few issues with the structure that do need to be addressed. My concern is that if you looked for the same types of things in other structures in the village, like Barnes and Chain Place, you would have a list twice that size. And so I'm concerned about consistency of enforcement. And I wondered where the other projects like the Barnes and Chain Place stand in terms of the question.
The biggest thing is I received questions from the preservation board in regards to that structure, which is a lot of effort. If, I mean, to be real, I could go around this village and issue violations all day, every day. That's not what I think my job is. I deal with things that become questioned, or I am asked to do. I don't want my way to go after people. I do not want to be deemed as that guy. You know, I don't believe my job is enforcement as much as it is to facilitate, to help people and facilitate. As far as Chain Place, like the powers, I went to them. They were a big hole in the group. I went to them. Two days later, it was fixed. You know, I do, I do the things that I know are a problem and deal with it. I don't say, take Charlie Fox. I know, if mine was a problem, had it cleaned.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So in your opinion, then, are the Barnes and Chain Place up to code and compliant now, or are there still issues?
They're barns. I mean, they're barns. They're not...
You know, we're getting a little off the top of here. Maybe you could follow up with Steve offline on this, because, you know, we have bad weather tonight. I'd like to just kind of keep things moving a bit. I think you're asking some good questions, and maybe that could be an offline conversation with Steve, and if need be, we can bring that back at another meeting. We do have our attorney here right now, and there was a question asked earlier. We were kind of waiting for you to come in.
He looked.
Who are you, then? Who is that masked man? So anyway, I know, Dan, you had a question about 44 North Main. And did you want to just rephrase the question?
Yeah, sure.
Because it was something maybe that Jeff, you could weigh in on.
Steve's report went to court on 11/10 for 44 North Main, and a plan was created and case adjourned as long as timeline was followed. First item on the list has not been accomplished. Is there cause for concern? Is there anything we should do to intervene?
What we would do to intervene is what Steve has been doing, and that is going down, checking, reminding. Whether there's cause for concern is probably an opinion that I don't feel comfortable like I should say, but missing a first timeline in an agreement is a little concerning, just legally. So we will keep an eye on it. My recommendation would be to wait until the end of the last timeline, and then we'll come back to the board and report, and see if the board is comfortable with the next step, which would be putting it back on the court's calendar, maybe issuing a new ticket for continuing violations. Okay?
Thank you.
That would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
I have one more question for the inspector, and also perhaps for the, for others here. The Climate Smart Community Resolution that was adopted, that was mentioned in your recent work, that we adopted on the November 10th, 2022 meeting, I was wondering how that is different from the one that I put forward on October 12th and 21?
They're two different entities.
And they just happen to have exactly the same resolution?
Pardon?
And they just happen to have exactly the same resolution text?
No, I think that was, we had to redo it. There was something about the filing of it. I think it was the same, I know where you're going with this. I think it was the same resolution.
The one that you signed, yeah. And then I had to submit that, and then we finally, you know, they just threw another thing. It was not only that, there's a whole myriad of another application paperwork that had to be filed, and then we just got affirmation of accreditation, I guess you would call it. We went three days or more.
Yeah, it was recently. I think it was just an issue with how it had been filed. It hadn't been filed appropriately before, so we had to just come back and redo it. That's all that was. It was a redo.
Okay, I didn't, I watched the meeting, and it wasn't really presented as a redo, and I wasn't sure why we had, it appeared that we had our attorney work on it, we had our building inspector work on it, when we had already adopted that exact same resolution more than a year previously. But I guess as long as it's filed, I hope that...
It's filed, and we're moving forward.
Since we've done it twice, I hope that we're all, it shows that we're all excited about this and I'm glad it's moving forward.
You know, just while you're asking a question about the Climate Smart, maybe just really quickly, was there's also the Heat Smart program, and so how's that been going? Because I know that was something you brought forth as well.
Yes, I did. And how has the board been dealing with that?
Well, you were the liaison, you know, so...
Was that at a meeting where I was present?
No, but we sent you the minute, you were told before the meeting, in the previous meeting, that we would bring it into the next meeting and make you the liaison. So...
I was not present at the meeting where that was decided on. Nobody had reached out to me about that.
Okay, well, we go over minutes and notes, so I'm sorry you missed that. Okay, so we'll follow up maybe offline about that, to see how that's going. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so next up, the DPW report, there is not a report. Unfortunately, our superintendent is out sick with COVID, and his whole family is as well. So I did speak with him earlier, but just a couple quick updates. First, a big thank you to DPW for all their hard work on Candlelight Night, and I also want to include the staff here at Village Hall. Everybody put their best foot forward and just did a great job. It was a highly successful evening in our village. It was wonderful. Yes, absolutely. Applause is welcome on that. Also, some of you may have noticed, the clock is missing from the four corners. Maybe you haven't. Anyway, it is out for repairs and full restoration. It's exciting. So they had to take the whole clock out, and it's going to be completely refurbished and repainted, as the board is aware of, and should be coming back sometime after the first of the year, certainly before March. And what's also very nice is that Bud and Peggy Frame donated that clock many years ago, and they have since passed, but the children, the Frame children, or were adult children, are splitting the cost of the restoration with us. They're donating 50%. So when the clock comes back, we're going to have a nice rededication at the Four Corners. So that's kind of a mini-update on what DPW's been doing. Also, another shout-out to the crew, because the weather's bad, and they've already been out there salting, and they're going to get to the sidewalks and make sure that we have safe passage through our village. So with that being said, Treasurers, report.
Okay, you have an updated bill pay that was sent to you. Is there any questions or concerns on this? I will point out, the HSA approvals, the people receiving them are in the bill pay. So we're kind of doing it all in one shot there. That's the annual funding. There is a couple of additionals, because we had employees that needed funding in this year.
I didn't have questions or concern. It's just a very big number, and I know that part of that is the HSA, but it's just a much bigger number than normal. Is that typical?
You have attorneys, you have the insurance renewal, you have big-ticket items. It adds up quick. It's...
Yeah, the workers comp came in.
Let me see, we have the Rain Creek project is in there. I mean, there's big tickets. That's all I can tell you. And the energy bills, let's just say, everybody's experiencing that. They, you know, we have one, it's 4,000 there, and they're just big numbers. And yeah, I hate to say it.
Yeah, 142,000.
Yeah, I know I cringe when it gets that high, but there are one-time things in there, your insurance renewals and the couple projects. So that is triggering some of that as well.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. Do I do both the sewer fund and the...
Yep, it's all at one.
Okay. You want the numbers?
No, that's okay. You can ask presented.
Ask presented.
Is there a second? A second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on my list, you received the notifications I received for the Monroe County sales tax distribution and the mortgage tax distribution. The good news with the Monroe County sales taxes, we're well above 50% of our collection at midpoint. I'd say we're more in the 60% range, so we're looking right on target. Mortgage tax, we budgeted 40,000. We got 20,000 and change in. We're definitely at the 50% mark.
Pretty close. That's hitting the center of the dartboard.
It's like, whoo, keep going. So that's all good news. Any questions on those? Okay. I presented the 2023 board meeting dates. I did hear back from Trustee Stetser. She didn't see any problems. I didn't hear from anybody else. I'm hoping they're good. If they are, we can adopt those tonight.
Looks good to me.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 meeting dates. Second?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Too fast. As I said, the HSA fundings were within the bill pay. Is there any concerns or anything if we're okay with that, if I can just have approval for those fundings? Which you kind of did.
Don't move.
Second?
Was that a second? If not, a second?
Okay.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I will update the board. You didn't get the financials, because really, I just got the bank statements on Monday morning, so I did not have time to hit those for you. So it'll be in the January first meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
The most recent closed month is what?
November, October. This will be closing November. We're always going to be a month behind.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
If we had a second meeting this month, you would have them final. It's just a meeting schedule.
Okay. Anything else from the treasurer?
I got nothing else.
Can we do a minute, or are we waiting?
Or can we do the clerk report? Is there a clerk report?
No, that was the clerk.
That was a clerk report, okay. So you're done with the clerk report?
I'm done with all my reports, except for the minutes, and if the board wants to wait and move on.
Yeah, why don't we hold up on the minutes, just because, you know, the timeline of everything. Okay, so then let's switch, oh, is our engineer online?
I'm hoping he is online.
Okay, let's promote him, please. Okay, so first up is Friends of the Arboretum.
I'm Jim White, eleven East Dersland Circle, and representing the Friends of the Arboretum. We thank you, Mayor Plummer, and the board, for allowing the Friends of the Arboretum to discuss progress in the arboretum and our proposals for the continued improvements that will achieve the original vision, increase the property's beauty and ecological value, and provide greater enjoyment of the park for the present and future generations. Our organization has grown in the last month, or in the last nine months, to represent over 100 members, generally representing village and town residents. Those members completed seven weeding parties throughout the summer and fall, producing substantial piles of weeded debris that included removed invasive species and plants. We're very appreciative of the village's DPW crews who followed up after our efforts and cleared away the piles from the park. We do note that one pile of gravel remains southeast corner of the pollinator meadow that would be great to have removed prior to ERN, give or take today's storms and so on. In a quick review of your packets tonight, you'll find included the details in that attachment A, presented at the July Village Board meeting, concerning potential funding opportunities that have become available from ARPA. As you are aware, the ARPA program targets health and wellness issues that were made evident by the COVID crisis. The development of the passive recreational green space was one of the maneuverable uses specifically designated as an appropriate use for those ARPA funds. Tonight, we request the board to both review and make decision on the items listed in your attachment B. Based on consultation with multiple professionals and horticultural experts, we believe these actions are the highest priority to continue to move this exciting community project forward. In referring to that attachment, we've broken down a number of items, such as the removal of large stances of invasive valanthus trees, which is important because of the spotted lanternfly that finds it as a comfortable host plant. These trees are also dormant in the winter, making it an optimum time for removal. The removal of the invasive Japanese knot wood, which includes deteriorers mitigated, needs additional work, and there's one area which is inside of a no trespassing area. Budgeted numbers on those, as you'll see, was approximately $15,000 to $20,000. Player landscape architect provide master plan for development and maintenance of the arboretum. That's at approximately $12,000. And the removal of the invasive mugwort and seeding of central meadow with native keystone pollinators such as golden bride, milkweed, and bottle brush. That cost estimate approximately $6,000, bringing the full amount of funds requested at $38,000. Other requests to the board. We've requested the updated corrected site plan. We know that that is still pending, your vendor, to release it, so we do look forward to receiving that once it's available. The next item's number two, we're going to revise the budget number, as we looked into it further, from $6,000 to $8,000. And that would be reserved for a few items, such as, and the item that drove up the cost, six permanent signs and installation. We would recommend those reflect the ones that just over in the carpenter parks, that there's some uniformity of signage here at the town and village. And of course, the locations of the trailheads. And the final item at $2,000 is planting of native trees. In summary, we'd like to take this opportunity to offer to provide a group tour for the Village Board to explain the environmental issues at play in the arboretum and to explain the potential opportunities that will occur if the original vision is realized. Let's take advantage of this opportunity to develop the ecological opportunities in the village as largest part, as a teaching resource and unique natural asset that will enrich the quality of life for village and town residents, as well as our community's visitors. In closing, I reflect upon all those root trees growing in the arboretum, quoting one of my favorite sayings from Confucius, who said, "The best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. Second best time is now." And with that, I would like to, if I may, introduce from the Boy Scouts, David Van Ginrobin, to talk about Project T's vision for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, my name is David Van Ginrobben, and my ego project will be to build six bluebird houses for the Friends of the Arboretum. I will also be building three mealworm feeders. I will have signs labeling the birdhouse and the mealworm feeders along with labeling them as part of my project. I will also hopefully be making an educational signage that explains the purpose of the bluebird houses and feeders. My project will help bring bluebirds back, um, bluebirds, sorry. To, my project will help bring bluebirds to the arboretum. His goal is to educate people about global plant and animal way. And I will be getting help, be getting help from the project from my fellow scouts, family and friends. My goal is to hopefully start work early spring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What troop are you with?
167.
Great, okay. Have you been out to, what is it, Wild Wings and seen their bluebird houses?
A while ago.
Yeah, it's great. Especially, you know, when they're in sea. Oh, it's amazing. Yeah, that's a cool project. Wonderful.
How did you get the idea to come up with this project?
Mr. Corby helped me. I came into contact with him. The picture of arboretum, I think that's research, it seemed interesting. So I contacted him and this was one of the projects, yeah, I'm ideal for and.
And for what badge?
Eagle Scout.
Nice, great. Yeah, good one.
Very well.
The biggie, yeah. The grand finale. Yeah, that's great. Wonderful. Okay. Do you have any, is there something, I don't know, was there anything submitted to us? Just, you know, just bullet points of what you want to do. So we kind of have, maybe give it to our village clerk if you could send something to our village clerk, if you have like a little write-up of your project and.
I can send you that.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be helpful for us. Yeah, it sounds great.
I just wanted to follow up on that. So would there be something like a non-municipal use permit needed to grant approval for this? Can we consider the presentation that was just made? Maybe with a couple of additional questions as constituting the non-municipal use permit to grant permission today?
There's a question, the insurance, if you do it that way.
Well, we're already insured.
Yeah, hopefully in the past of these projects.
Because we're insured.
Yeah, how do we, how do we do them?
Yeah.
With the.
Yeah.
It's just on the black on the street. On the pocket park.
No, not for Auburn. It wasn't a NME for Auburn at all.
I'm willing to accept the risk of some bluebirds suing us if they don't find the hesitation to be.
Yeah, those guys are tough.
It's not the risk of the bluebirds, it's the risk of the workers.
Yeah.
What we're worried about.
But we already have insurance on that site, remember?
With the volunteers.
With volunteers.
So that would encourage.
Yes. How big are these approximately?
I don't believe they're too big. I probably wouldn't say more than one foot tall and then maybe four or five inches wide and long.
And would they be permanently affixed to a tree or on a post?
They'd be on a post, yeah, on a post.
So you'd bring a post and there wouldn't be, there's not like a concrete footer or anything that you're, that you're bringing in? Or how would these be stuck in the, in the ground? Is there something removable if they're?
They'd probably be some way dug up the ground and planted in the ground, maybe these concrete or some.
Yeah.
And how, how high up? There's a certain height, right?
Six feet.
Yeah, six feet. That's, yeah. Just trying to remember that.
Why wouldn't we handle this like any other eagle scout?
Right, yeah. I don't know why.
Did you already say that?
Yeah, I did. Yeah. I mean, there's.
I've got a map today.
It takes a long time to get prepared.
I said, how do we do it before using that as a, yeah.
So would that be submitted then for the next meeting as a non-municipal permit or what do we?
No, no.
I think, I think because there's a project and you have plans, if you could put it all in writing, so the board has something submitted to them. And then maybe next meeting, they can both approve or disapprove. I can't say what they'll do. I'm going to guess they'll approve. But just so they have a plan and your steps that you're going to take to do it, your budget. I think those are things that are part of your projects. So if you can put all that into writing and submit it to me, I'll make sure they get it and put it on the January 12th meeting.
Sounds good.
That way it's more formalized.
And maybe with like, you know, just a drawing of what they're going to look like and the dimensions, you know, just as you asked. So that's just helpful for everybody.
So does he need to come back? Or given that he's already done the presentation, can we just have him submit everything?
I would say something to you. If you have a question regarding what he submitted, you could always zoom in and we could bring you in if you need it. Okay?
I mean, we'd love it if he came back, but we know you don't want us to hear. Probably, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have a sponsor? And who will be signing when you've completed your project? Who will be the person who's signing on the project, off on the project?
Spencer Jones is my sponsor.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're pro-bluebird, so we're very excited. Yeah.
And mealworm, right? That was the other.
Oh, yes, a mealworm, of course.
We're leaving them out in the dust here.
That's right.
If you need help with that paperwork, show us a draft of it and we'll give you some notes on it ahead of time, so.
Sounds good.
Sure.
And do you have, I was going to say, you give them a card maybe?
Yep, me step away, I'll give you my card.
Yeah, the village clerk will give you information. Okay, so you can be in touch with us.
That's good.
Thanks a lot. Sounds like a great project.
Yeah, sounds very good. Thanks so much.
Can we add the timeframe that you want to do the work, you know, your projected, when work, when you want to work?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that.
We have a big window. You may not know.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah. Because we're all in the truth.
Wonderful. Thanks so much again.
It's April or May, whatever it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good, Judd. Nice presentation. Okay.
Before we move on, I just wanted to, if I may, for a moment. Mr. Wake, I really appreciate your presentation and I appreciate the, the presentations and the ongoing work from the Friends of the Arboretum. I would like to discuss in a little bit more depth some of their proposals here since they've been presented throughout the course of a few different meetings. And so essentially it breaks down into some, some work related to invasives, landscape architecture proposals, and there's the, I guess the, so with invasives and, and the landscape proposals. Maybe we can start with the landscape proposal? And I just wanted to understand where, so we've gotten the survey done. I think that's completely closed out, is it? So we.
Yes, and we actually have Scott Harder, our village engineer, who is right online now. Yeah, so he can speak to some of, some of, some of this. But what I'd like to do, well, let's start with Scott and then, because I have some information on invasives as well, so. Yeah, Scott, are you there?
Here.
You're there. Okay, hi, Scott. Yep. Trustee Lightip has, has some questions, you know, now that the survey component has been closed out. Just going forward. And what we're going to do in the interest of time is item number seven, which is on the agenda about the approval of RFPs and RFQs. We're going to move that up as part of this Friends of the Arboretum discussion because the first RFP is for a landscape consultant. And so this is an opportunity, I think, for us to address things in full, more comprehensively, certainly. So Justin, did you want to ask some of your questions?
Well, really, I was just wondering what the, if there are any blockers to proceeding with the RFP? And it sounds like there, there may not be. I did not get a chance to review this RFP. We just got them less than six hours before the meeting. So maybe if, if Mary would like to describe where we are with the RFP and we go from there.
Well, there's a number of RFPs. There's the, the RFP for the landscape consultant. Actually, hang on, I'm scrolling down. Scott can speak to, again, about the parameters. And really what we're seeking tonight is direction from the board to make sure that we all understand the parameters and give direction to Scott and also to Jeff, obviously, for the legal aspects of pulling together this RFP, to be coming back to the board first thing in January so we can issue it and get it, get it out there. So Scott, do you want to speak to, you know, some of the discussions that we've had in the past about doing the needs assessment for DPW in conjunction with the needs for the arboretum? If you could speak to that and how, how we should be structuring the RFP?
Sure. We haven't done an RFP yet. I understood we were on the agenda to speak about developing an RFP. And I think in the past, we've spoken about the need, yes, for a landscape architect person to take a look at this and also someone to take a look at the overall property and the two very different uses and be a consultant, I guess, to the village and take into consideration all the needs that may occur on that property. Plus the information that I just heard presented. I think all of that kind of needs to come together into one person who is adept at this particular type of project and, and deliver something of a good quality to the village. I think that's generally what you're looking for.
And then, and then my understanding, and maybe Jeff, you could speak to this a little bit too. This was a prior discussion as well about, because of the two, they're very different needs. What the DPW has, you know, in terms of its requirements and what, you know, what we want for our public, public land for the arboretum, the possibility in the proposal then, Jeff, of subdividing in some fashion?
I'd like to hear Scott's thoughts on that, whether he thinks we need to separate the two uses with an, with an actual subdivision, or is there a better way to do that?
I think we spoke, maybe it was a meeting ago or two, we spoke about, Jeff, and I think we spoke about a declaration.
Okay.
In other words, not going through the subdivision process.
Right.
Separating the land, but just because you, because you own the entire parcel, you, it's sort of like a self-deed restriction, I think.
Yeah, so you would do a declaration with a meets and bounds description?
Right.
Yeah.
Does everybody understand what meets and bounds are? Scott, you want to describe what meets and bounds are? Just because it's a specific.
So meets and bounds is also known as a legal description is also, is really just the geometrics or the.
Picking up, maybe you could be closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I've been getting a notice that my internet connection is unstable.
Yeah, you sound very stable, so keep going.
So if I disappear, that's what happened. Meets and bounds is simply the, the mathematical boundary of the limits of the land being affected, whether you're subdividing or whatever. It meets and just legally described the perimeter of the property.
Thank you. That, that's helpful.
So we have a drawing in, in that of the bounds?
I mean, Scott may see this differently. But I think the first step would be to get somebody who could look at the declaration of the 10 acres, look at all we've got, and then do an analysis of the best way to fit what remains for the DPW in a actual description of what is to remain for the DPW. So that you would have a description of DPW property. You'd have a description of the arboretum property. And then, I mean, and then you, you know where the divisor is. So that the person who was planning the DPW property knows the limits of where they can go. And when we're, when we're working on the arboretum, we know the limits of where they can go.
Would it make sense to have the same landscape architect who's going to be doing the plan for the arboretum itself help figure that out? Because I know when I walked through with Bob Corby, he, just like the different uses of, I don't quite get it because I'm not a landscape architect. But clearly there are some places that would be more appropriate for DPW and a better use for other things. So can we have the, the landscape architects do that? Or do we need to figure out this drawing, this meets and bounds proclamation before we put the RFP on?
No, I think, I mean, Scott, I don't know how you're thinking about this. But I think, I think we need to know what the DPW needs and how they're going to use it in conjunction with the 10-acre limitation that's on that property.
Yes, I think so. I mean, I think the, the final dividing line, if that's the way to describe it, I think that's a byproduct of, of this work. This person is going to take a look at everyone's needs and all the, all the factors and then come up with a determination as to how these two uses can agree with one another. And then I think, I think the separation line between the two uses is, once again, the, the byproduct of this work.
So the declaration is written from, from this work and comes back to the board to make at the end. Okay, that's all.
Oh, true.
Okay.
I think that's the last thing. I think once you all agree on the design and the, and the master plan and, and all the particulars, then, 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 then you can make that declaration.
So the answer to your question is planners come first, declarations second.
Okay. And there's, and there are just also in terms of like a person, there are, you know, larger firms that have that umbrella that can do the, the needs assessment for the municipal side, for the requirements for our DPW. And also have, you know, with, under their umbrella again, you know, landscape designers and architects. So, and that can also be rolled into the RFP depending on how, how, you know, we direct them to. And I would direct you guys to take a look at that and roll that into the RFP. So we're addressing both needs.
Well, so based on this conversation, I, I take it that you'd like me to do as I did with another one of these RFPs. Might, you'd like me to come up with a draft? And then the board would review it and comment, and we would revise it presumably. And then I'd get ready to send it out. Is that right?
Yeah, I think it's a practical matter that makes, makes sense. And obviously, working with our attorney, just in terms of legal aspects of the RFP, the requirements that we're talking about.
Should there be any? There may not be any.
If there are, yeah. It's just, of course, yep.
So I'd be okay to approve this, but, but I do want to read it. So I, like, Justin just got it today and it's long.
No, it's not in there.
It's not in there.
Oh, oh.
There's three in there. I don't know which are the landscapes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, same comment.
So, so the direction, see, understand tonight, what, what we're bringing back to the board is we, we know that we have two different sets of needs. We have a DPW and we have the public land. And we know we want to do something with both and, and do right by both. So the direction tonight would be to our engineer, just working in case there's any legal issues with our attorney, to do a draft of the RFP to bring back to the board. So you would all be able to read it, review it, have input. This is a working document and it would come back to the board in January so we could get going on this and get this RFP out, so we can get a designer in and somebody to assess these needs. That's the next step in this process for us to be able to move forward.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So I'd entertain a motion to, to do that.
So moved.
What I just said.
Discussion?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to understand better what this proposal will contain. So it sounds like they're doing both needs assessment of the DPW.
Yep.
And landscape architecture?
I mean, that's how I see it. I see them working together with the limits, within the limitations of what we've already got declared. But the, the good thing about what we already have declared is that it's not been specifically described legally. So the, the boundaries of where the 10 acres are exactly can move around a little bit.
Scott, have, have you worked with, maybe, you know, this is just outside of my, my experience area, but affirm that as both experienced in DPW needs assessment and landscape architecture, those just sound like quite disparate areas. And I'm not quite sure how the, how this proposal and the work is going to come together, I guess.
Well, I, I think, I think some firms have architects and landscape architects. And I think the needs assessment is often done by architects. But, but I think you can find a consultant who, I mean, I mean, it's also kind of ties in with planning. A consultant who has a landscape architecture background, planning background, maybe some architecture background with respect to the, the uses of these buildings and maybe future buildings. And, and I would just encourage everyone to let us produce the draft and comment on it. And, and if we need to add things or subtract things. I see this RFP is a little more complex than some of the other ones that are before you. I, I think there's a lot of community input. So I think you need a very unique consultant to handle all the variables.
I, I appreciate that. It does sound like, Renee, do you want to go ahead?
All right, well, just kind of piggybacking on what you were saying. I think, my understanding is that the, there wouldn't be like two master plans that are coming out of this. It's not a DPW master plan and a, and a arboretum master plan. It would simply be the designation, the meets and, whatever it was called, meets and bounds, so that.
Legal description.
Okay, so then, so we could come up with our proclamation to just delineate where the DPW was, but I don't, it's my understanding, we're not having this landscape architect come up with a master plan for DPW. It's just simply a part, a byproduct of the other things.
I, I mean, I'm not going to speak for Scott, but my vision is that coming out of this thing, you would have the legal descriptions for each parcel, and then you would have an understanding of what has to happen on the landscaping side and on the DPW side to make it all work. So, in that sense, yeah, the, the same person is doing the landscaping plan for the arboretum and is doing a DPW plan for the DPW.
But it's not saying, in the future, we'd like to have these buildings here and this here and that. I think that's what, is that what you're asking? Because we're almost doing two simultaneous plans, and I think that, that the DPW is a different, a more intensive thing, so.
I think we've known that from the beginning. I think we're saying, you know, we're just circling back on that. I mean, and that's why we, as Scott said, it's a little more specialized RFP and, you know, looking for a firm or consultants that can address both, because they're right up against each other. They're, that's, that's what, that's our, that's empirical evidence. So, you really can't do one without the other, and really, what's derivative is we need to do that needs assessment of DPW, because now we know for a fact 10 acres of what was originally thought of as 13 acres is actually 10 acres out of 11.2. So, it's important that as a village, because our DPW runs our infrastructure here, that we make sure that there's the needs assessment and where those boundaries are for where DPW is relative to, and going forward with the plans for what DPW needs and the arboretum. So, it's, it's, it's going to be a little more complicated, but it's doable. We need to do it. These are our next steps. This is what we have talked about for essentially the last 18 months, and so here we are. And so, you know, we do have a motion before us to at least get this draft of this RFP, so we can, we can start to get things moving. And it's great, because now it's over the winter, so we can start getting things moving forward. So, that's why we're here tonight to discuss this, and it's on the agenda. Yeah. Yes, Lily?
May I clarify that the request for the removal of the isle anthus would not occur until after the board has decided on the landscape architect's plan? Could it be, could be, could it be separated out?
I think we've always, I think we've always spoken about it as being separate, because I actually see removal of invasives, and I always have, even for, I mean, for decades, that that's part of stewardship over property that has nothing to do with design, nothing to do with where we want to trail, nothing to do with signage. We have invasives on public land, and there hasn't been any stewardship over it. So, that's something to me, and I said that in the last meeting, and I've said that in several meetings before. We all want the arboretum. We also want the invasives removed. Even if there was not an arboretum, just so we're really clear, and everybody listening tonight, even if that had never been designated as an arboretum, we should always have stewardship over our public lands and make sure that we're taking care of our invasive species and removing them. So, to me, that has always been something separate, whether or not, whatever that designation would have been for that parcel. It just hasn't happened in the past, so now here we are, and we're going to try to put together that program. And that's something I, I would like to speak to when we're ready to talk about invasives.
Okay, so you want to separate that up?
Well, and also, trusty like that, you wanted to address it in two different things.
I was wondering when we might address the cost, given that the budget discussions are happening, that to, to take out the 15,000 is being requested out of ARPA funds and earmarked for that, for that, specifically for that, the removal of the invasives.
Well, first of all, I haven't seen any, any proposals. I don't know how they came, that those numbers came up. You know, so I think we would need to have some more documentation about that. Excuse me, one, just one second, I'm not, I'm not quite done. And then I also would like, you know, because we're in our budget cycle.
Yeah.
So, you know, good point, and, you know, I know you, there's a process to that, that our treasurer can speak to as well, so.
I think when you're reviewing all the ARPA funds, the board hasn't made any determination on the remaining funds as to how you want to use it and how it's going to impact. So, what's the give, what's the take, what projects do you want to move forward? As we're starting our budget review, we're looking at the ARPA funds, because it goes part and parcel with the budget. How, what projects are coming on ARPA, what's happening here, what's being completed. So, you know, I'm hoping to present to the board in January of, you know, recommendations, at least on my end, for how you use the funds.
So, you know, really, I think it's, wouldn't be prudent tonight, maybe, you know, to vote on something on, on these numbers. You know, we need to see a little more documentation, first of all, and we can bring that into our budget process, which we would need to do. And, you know, also, we need to kind of get the overall picture of how this does fit into the budget, as you just said. So, it's just, we just integrate this into the budget process, and I think that's, you know, that's the way we all move forward.
Brooklyn has our wish list items, and I know I sent that to him. I didn't have a number. I thought it was 8,000 from one of the earlier meetings. So, once we have a number, and that's what I told him.
Well, that's what we're looking at, all the discussion we had on ARPA and how, what can be funded. I mean, there's some very large items, and there's items on the village end that we would like to see accomplished as well. So, we're gathering all those numbers to present to the board. At the end of the day, it's going to be a board's decision how we separate the funds. But also understand, ARPA doesn't take away the procurement policy. Anything done for the arboretum, it's not that we write a check. It has to be done through the village. It has to go through proper process. So, if it's 15,000 to 20,000, that's a bid, that's.
Right.
We're getting the cost, that's proper.
Exactly. So, that's where your real cost is going to come from, is go get three bids the next month here.
Exactly, that's how we do it. Thank you.
Right, that's what's going to have to happen, but I have to take a measure of all the needs that the village has, all the needs that the community suggested, everything, and make suggestions to the board, and they're going to dictate and say, no, you're wrong, you're right here, no, give me this, no. So, we need to have that continued discussion, and I'm hoping we can have that starting in January. And that's going to start off, actually, should be part of the budget process. The ARPA, then go to reserves, and then go into the budget numbers. And that is something we're hoping, and I, I'm not sure if Brooklyn's sending it out, but we're trying to schedule for late in January to start our budget meetings.
Yep.
So, that is, I believe, the first step in the budget, to know what we're doing on that.
So, we know invasives or the elimination, or whatever you call it, of the invasives is one of the things that we're looking at in that, this budget, and particularly.
That's what we're suggesting, that we would like to see.
Yes, absolutely. It's already on the list.
It's already on the list.
It's actually already on, all of this is already on our list.
Meeting rooms found. There's, you know.
There's windows, there's, there's restoration work, yeah.
Very definitive.
There's, there's, there's a list, and you're on the list.
Yes.
Because we're in our budget cycle, and that's how it works in our municipality, in any municipality.
So, there's a motion on the table, right?
Can I, can I answer Renee's question first? I don't think that this, whoever we hired to do this planning can, we'll do it a different way. Personally, this planning must take into consideration present and future needs of the DPW to make this all work.
Okay, so I was incorrect, in my first assumption.
Yeah, I think they've.
So, it is a detailed.
I think that they've got to do that, or we're shooting in the dark.
Which is what Mayor Plummer said as well. Yeah. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so we do have a motion on, on the table. Oh, yes.
I have another comment before we move on to votes. I'm, I'm concerned about this direction personally, and I'm, I'm not in favor of it. I wish that if, if I knew that we were taking such a big step in terms of the development of that parcel, that I had had some heads up about it before the meeting, specifically the proposal to issue an RFP for the expansion of the DPW and the.
There's no RFP for expansion?
Well, it's about the, the future needs of the DPW, and I guess what I'm concerned about is, is expansion. So, whether or not that actually happens, it seems like we may be moving in, in that direction, based on the outcome of this work. As far as I know.
Justin, can I stop here?
Yeah.
Are you, I made me misunderstood. Are you saying you're worried about this process expanding the property of the DPW? So?
Yes, that's sort of my concern, yes.
Just bear in mind, under no circumstances could any such expansion eat into 10 acres of what's already dedicated as, as the arboretum parter. The whole point is just to configure it to everybody's, to both needs, best interest.
I, I appreciate that, and, you know, that's, that does, that does offer me some reassurance. I guess that I'm, I'm still concerned that when we started this process, we had a, a picture in the comp plan of this area that was going to be set aside for the arboretum. There's a resolution that referred to that picture. This board then said, we wanted to be sure of the boundaries of the parcels, so we had an extensive survey done, which also looked at, at that image of the arboretum eventually that was designated. And so, to me, it sounds like after going through that whole process, we're saying, okay, now we're going to figure out what the boundary is between the DPW and the arboretum. To me, this has always been something that's relatively clear, based on the landmarks and based on the usage patterns of the DPW. And if you walk the parcel, there's not that much ambiguity about where it's going to go. So, I feel like we're adding a lot of things to this RFP that's going to severely diminish the pool of the competent people who can really excel in both areas, landscape architecture and needs assessment. And I, I think that it also takes away our ability to just say right out, for example, that we've got these ARPA funds, they're ideal for this kind of a, a one-shot expenditure. It's not going to leave us with a structurally imbalanced budget or something. We could say, you know, we want to issue an RFP just for the development of the arboretum and the footprint that was originally intended, and which does not seem to be in, in dispute to any substantial extent, even after we've had a complete survey conducted. So, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of this expansion of scope. I feel like we can clearly segment those two out. I would be in favor of a, a motion to provisionally designate the amount that a landscape architect seems to have said is going to cost for the, the planning of that parcel and issue an RFP for that specific purpose, but.
How do we know these numbers are accurate? We don't even have documentation, and we would love the documentation for how you arrived at these numbers. I'm, I'm not comfortable voting on, on estimates just given to us on anything like, like this. I think we have a motion before us, and we've had a second to address the issues that were already, have been discussed in, in great detail tonight and cogently by our engineer, also with input from our attorney. So, I'd like to go back to the motion. I, I can't even imagine that we would vote on funding when we don't have enough hard, hard information. And we also have just heard that it's already in, on the list and in our budget cycle. So, we all want the arboretum. We all want this project to go forward. We just talked about what the next step was, and this has been mentioned in so many meetings over the last 18 months already, every time this has come up, what the steps are. We are now at a really positive step to move this forward, to have an RFP issued, where, you know, a draft, where the, the engineer can work on this with any input legally as needed from our attorney, and bring this back to our board. I think this is a prudent step, and it's a, it's the way to go. To simply arbitrarily vote on funding when we have absolutely no documentation, I think is, is not a, a, a proper procedure for this board. And we do have a motion, and we have a second. Yes?
I have a little comment.
Okay.
Art Pierce, I'm sorry, this is State Street. There are a number of A and E firms in the area who would be able to prepare the mapping and drawings as discussed by the board. These firms have all the appropriate professionals under one roof to drive what the board is looking for. Certain that Scott can provide the names of a number of qualified firms to whom to send the RFP, and we do have a speaker.
Thank you, Art.
Mr. Corby, you're allowed to speak.
Thank you. Robert Corby, 7 Washington Avenue. I'm sorry, I can't be there tonight. I have the flu, and I didn't want to give it to any of you. You know, there, in the professional world, there's different specialties. There are landscape architects that specialize in the type of horticultural issues that are prevalent in the arboretum. You know, this is not a one-size-fits-all. With the space planning for the DPW, you not only want to consider historic preservation issues, because it will affect the view shed of the Erie Canal, a national historic landmark. You want somebody that is, is good at space planning and will design a structure that also fits into the context of that historic view shed. I'm not quite sure why you would link the two, because it's, it's like they're two very, very different tasks. The other thing I'm confused about tonight is from the beginning, the delineation of the 10 acres, that area was selected because the, the line runs along basically where there is a natural berm and a grove of spruce trees that provides a natural visual buffer between the DPW yard and property and the interior of the arboretum. To, to reinvestigate this all over again, when it's been done so many times before, I just don't understand why we just can't move forward on that. If you walk the site and you look at it, you will see it's, it's an obvious location of why there's, that boundary was, was decided to be put there, because when you're in the arboretum, you can't see the, the equipment and things that are stored in the yard. You know, it makes perfect sense. So, you know, I think this is an area that you really need to give some more study to, so, because, you know, if you pick a big firm like MRB, yes, they have landscape architects. Normally, they design big suburban DPW facilities on 30 acres in someplace like the town of Ogden. That's not the type of space planning that's going to work on a, a confined. This is really more of an urban site that has some sensitive visual issues. The other comment I'd like to make tonight is that, you know, all the work on the arboretum has been stalled over the last year and a half, and we formed our group to help you move this project forward. We have done the research, because nothing has happened on the village ends, and it's in everybody's interest to make this a great project. By that end, I was stunned at our last work party to find that another mulch pile had been dumped in the arboretum. We, we have already established that dumping mulch piles spreads invasive plants. We have talked to horticultural experts about this. There is no way to guarantee there aren't Japanese knotweed or some other mugwort, some other invasive plant in those piles, and why we would have another one after the controversy that was developed by the unauthorized blocking of a trail with a first mulch pile leaves me speechless. So, again, I would ask that you take our proposal seriously and move this forward. We are trying to help you. If you move on these proposals with the isle anthus trees, we got numbers. We are not trying to be the village. We know you have a procurement policy that you have to follow. But by getting rid of these, we can do more work to help you and move the project forward. So, thanks for your consideration of my comments tonight.
Thank you. I hope you feel better soon.
Okay. Can we ask that question? Can we have a little clarification from Jeff about that?
No, he's listening. He's meditating.
That, what would be the downside for us to separate those two RFPs? They have one RFP for a firm to investigate the DPW and give us the information we need about that, and another firm to, to assess the 10 acres of landscape architect.
So, I don't really think that's a legal question. That's a Scott question, but I would say there is no reason, but one can't happen without the other. They have to happen, they have to happen together. So, those, if you have one RFP for that and one RFP for this, there has to be a collaboration between those two specialties.
And, and as a vendor, I'd rather have one throat to choke.
Though I hear one of the, one of the concerns is that the bigger firms that would cover both of these things wouldn't be able to handle the uniqueness of this landscape.
May or may not. I, I think that's something that we bring into consideration as a board. And that's a Scott, Scott, I was sorry, it's with Dan.
The idea of an RFP is you put it out and see what you get.
And then we can split them up.
Right, and then we can, we can assess it and reevaluate, you know, it's a process. But Scott, did you want to weigh in on this? You've heard some of these comments and part of the discussion.
I would just say that based on, on my experience to date, when I see projects like this, where the. I would just say that based on my experience to date, when I see projects like this, whether or without different uses, I mean, fundamental planning, Seeker 101 tells you to take a look at the whole project. They tell you not to segment it. It seems to me that this would be a prime candidate for segmentation if we simply ignored the other use, as is being suggested. I disagree with that. I think you want to take a look at the whole enchilada and make a comprehensive decision as to both these uses. I think that when this first started out, there was confusion over the size of the parcel. That's what brought us to do the survey that we did. And if we hold the 10 acres that was originally identified based on that incorrect survey and apply it to now a reduced parcel of the size, from what I can tell, that kind of handicaps the DPW. Certainly, this consultant could take a look at that, determine whether the DPW needs to shift its uses around in order to use what's remaining to it, or I don't know if this line can be modified, or if some sort of litigation can take place, or if the DPW has to find another home. But I think that's all part of the study, if you will.
And so it brings us back. I think let's close, the discussion can now be closed out, and let's just bring it back. We do have a motion and a second.
Can I just make one more, one more comment?
One more. Please be brief, because we've got a motion here.
We've discussed many, many times the boundaries and the division in this, in this particular parcel. We've had an extensive survey done. We've had many meetings talking about exactly where these boundary lines are. When I was helping to review the site plan for the park immediately to the west of this, it was done by the town, it was organized by Sioux Steel, designed by Sioux Steel, and a third of the trail isn't even on town property. And I don't even believe they had procured permission to build that trail when we first started the plans. I think Ms. Loda can probably attest to that as well. So to me, a lot of this is, when we're talking about essentially getting Sioux Steel, same landscape architect potentially, to help us plan a couple of trails in a field here, I think we've gone about 10 meetings too long on this and probably about $10,000 too much in terms of planning personally. So, you know, I appreciate all the discussion, but I am not in favor of this expansion.
You mentioned it. Thanks so much. Okay. We closed out the discussion. We have a motion on the table. Do you need it restated? Are we all clear?
Could we restate that?
Yeah, the motion. Can we restate the motion?
I'd last track what the motion. Okay. I think the motion was to authorize Scott Harter to develop an RFP related to the needs of DPW and the Arboretum and landscaping.
A draft?
A draft. After a draft to bring back to the board with the assistance of our village attorney. Did I get it all? Is that good?
Okay, so that's the motion, and there was a second.
I would like to see that.
You'd like to what?
I'm interested in, yes, I'm interested.
Well, that's part of the motion. It's a draft, it's a draft of an RFP, to be clear.
We don't have anything yet.
To come back to the board. We have no RFP in front of us this evening. It is coming back to our board for review at our meeting in January, hopefully, you know, if we can, you know, if it's ready to go, but as soon as possible. And that's where we are. There's nothing being issued tonight. There is nothing in front of the board, just for clarity. We have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit.
No.
Trustee Lampier.
Yes.
Trustee Keating.
Yes.
Trustee Stetzer.
Yes.
Mayor Plummer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Okay, thank you. We do want to just talk about invasives for a minute. Can, do you have a PRISM? I'm going to ask you, are you aware of the PRISM program?
No, I'm not.
Okay. We're going to give some of these documents to you. And I meant, no, Dorothy is casting it out, yeah. Yeah, and I brought this up at several meetings in the past, over the past 18 months. This is a program, and it's, PRISM is an acronym for, I think it's Partnership for Regional Invasive Species Management. It is administered through Hobart William Smith College in conjunction with DEC. Also, the Seneca Zoo Society, who's helped us with the Arboretum, has also worked with PRISM, and they strongly recommend that we reach out to them. I've already reached out to them. It's the holidays, it's been a little bit of back and forth, but I think this is an opportunity for PRISM to support the removal of the invasives, working with Friends of the Arboretum and also with our village, you know, in general. So I just, you know, you can, maybe we have extra copies if you need, if you want to distribute them to people. But this is really a good program, and it's statewide, and it's comprehensive, and there may be opportunities also for grant funding for invasive species removal through PRISM. So I think this is something that we should all be aware of going forward with removal of invasive species. It's a solid program. And I've been to two lectures by them over the last six years, and it is absolutely amazing what they're doing. It is comprehensive, whether it's aquatic, you know, species that are invasive, whether it's, you know, terrestrial. It is a wonderful program. So, you know, just to cheer you up, take a look at that, but I think that's an opportunity really for us to get some solid resource people in, working with all of us to remove, you know, for this removal program. So that's, that's my input going forward in terms of invasives. And so as I get information back, I'll forward it directly to you folks, too, so we can all be in the loop on that, because it's important that we follow through.
Mayor Plummer, do they do the work, or do they provide funding?
They do both. They actually do both. They do field work as well, they do educational work, they do tremendous community outreach, they work with volunteers. So, as I said, it's really comprehensive what they do, and if there's something that they can't do, or something that they can't meet, they are a tremendous resource statewide, and they can bring in additional resources as well, and also help us identify potentially other sources of funding for invasive species removal. So it's a good opportunity, I think, for all of us. Okay. Scott, while we have you here, anything else on this, because we're moving forward at this point? Okay. Scott, we just want to bring up, we're going to just go right through, again, item number seven has just moved up to replace item number two. So just very quickly, let's review the RFP that went out for South and Wood Street. Scott, are you there?
I'm there. As I understand it, the RFP went out, and we did not get any responses.
Yes, it's been very difficult for us to get responses on our RFPs.
How long has it been out?
It's out, and it was due. We didn't receive anything in. We, we sent it out, we sent it to all the consultants we used with Shane Place. We had some questions, we answered those questions, we sent that back out. The eighth came when they were due, and nothing arrived.
There's so much work out there, you know.
Do we want to just let those that ask follow-up questions, that shows some sign of interest? Do we want to maybe extend it for them and let them know, hey, we'll give you a couple more weeks?
What we need to do is just reissue, just change the date, re-legalize it, do everything, because it's passed. Unlike the bid for the back entrance, we were to do an amendment, there's no amendment on this one, so.
Again, we can just move this forward and extend.
Right. And I think, Scott, you might have had some suggestions to change with the RFP.
Well, I think Zach had mentioned that Sutherland Street was.
Scott, I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little better.
Zach had mentioned to me that Sutherland Street was a candidate for improvements as well, and we were thinking perhaps having another street added to the mix, or the RFP, if you will, could be more enticing to these firms, and we might get better responses. So that was what Zach and I spoke about.
Yeah, Sutherland is on the list, and so you're saying if we just kind of sweeten the pot, basically, for anybody responding, then it's a larger project.
I think it would, you know, it's a very difficult market out there right now. Some of the, you know, we're typical consultant questions, like what's the budget? It's kind of a chicken or egg type of question. We don't exactly know what the budget is until we have an idea of what the scope of the improvements need to be, and we don't know what the scope of the improvements are going to be until we investigate, can investigate, until we have someone retained to do that for us. So, but by that question going forward, as I've seen it on other ones we've done, you know, the consultants are interested in profit. How much profit is there? They're going to look at that budget number, and that will, that will affect their determination as to whether they want to participate. And it's a very, very brisk market out there right now. There's a lot of work. There is actually a glut of work, I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, there's been a bad block, obviously, too. So, you know, so then, would it make sense then, in terms of an action item this evening, are you thinking that it would be to circle back with Zach to look at the parameters for adding in Sutherland? Does that make sense to the board, to see where we're going with this?
Sure.
You know, because Sutherland's on the schedule anyway, next, you know.
It would be beneficial to put the, well, if we get a better response, I mean, we'd have to, so then at our January meeting, we would have to make.
Because it's a much bigger project altogether.
Right, yeah. Right. But it's going to be in phases, you know, and, you know, it would be in phases for whoever.
We're going to need the engineering for Sutherland anyway.
Yeah, yeah, no matter what.
So do we want to wait before we make any, are we waiting for Zach to come back?
I think the action item is to give direction to Scott, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, Scott, to you and to Zach, to define the parameters of adding in Sutherland to the existing RFP?
Yeah, to amend it.
Yeah, amending, thank you. I wasn't thinking of the word.
I'll make a motion to direct Scott Harter to work with Zach, to just about taking the two together.
Yeah.
Okay. Second. Somebody, okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Stetzer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that's, that's in the hopper.
Could I add one thing to the discussion on that?
Sure.
One thought that occurs to me is that when these situations arise and we don't get any responses or few responses, it's not a bad idea to check in with a couple of the consultants who we contacted and ask, and ask them why they didn't submit.
You could do that, reach out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's helpful feedback to us, you know, maybe there was something, maybe we phrased something a certain way that was not working for them, I don't know. But I think it's, it's kind of one-sided here. Perhaps we could learn from the people who received it in a way to do it better.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's a great idea, so we can circle back on that. Next up is an RFQ for, this is regarding the 75 Monroe Project for architecture, architectural oversight and building code services, and also engineering as well, but Scott's our engineer on this and is familiar with the project already. But Scott, do you want us to speak to the nature of this and the importance of this?
Or could we do it a different way? Since we just got this, could we review it, and we'll shoot them any questions if we have them?
Do you want to do that?
Yeah. Because he's going to be talking about a thing that we haven't reviewed.
You haven't reviewed it, okay, okay.
When, what is our timeframe for this?
Soon.
Soon.
I'll speak by the next meeting for sure, so we can interact.
Has the escrow account been replenished?
No, I think this is all part of that. We need numbers.
Okay, that will tell them how much we have.
Yes, we need numbers. We can't move forward.
Yep, that's where we're going. Okay, so Scott, did you, did you hear what Dan said?
Yes, I heard what he said. I'm happy to, you know, discuss this with you at the next meeting, if you'd like.
Absolutely. Let's, let's plan on that. Okay, so that's an action item there. Okay, so next up is, again, this would just be a direction. This is the RFQ for green infrastructure, and there was an example of an RFQ that was a model from Nicerta?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Just what?
Nicerta.
So same comment there?
New York State Energy.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, and so this is all part and parcel of really sort of, you know, what we've been talking about really for quite a while, you know, where we need to replace our furnace, we need, we're looking at green infrastructure projects, we're adopted as a climate smart community. And so this is really putting out an RFP to those firms that can support our village in this process. We did have one presentation from Siemens, there's other engineering firms out there as well. So again, this would be direction really with Scott and also with input from our attorney to make sure that, you know, we can draft an RFP and bring it back to the board again for review, because we obviously have so many projects and things that we're looking at, you know.
So same comment there. I'd put forward that we review it, and if we have questions for Scott, we'll shoot them to him.
Well, also, I think, too, there's a couple other draft RFQs that we have, so I'm thinking in the meantime as well, and we can get this back out to the board, that we direct Scott to take a look at those and maybe do some consolidation for what our village really needs. You know, this is just a sample from Nicerta, it's just a generic RFP, and I think we can give direction to Scott and to Jeff to maybe just get some language back to the board that would be much more specific for what our village needs. You know, like we had the whole assessment that was done by the Galisano Energy Institute, and they made a number of recommendations. Those kinds of things could be incorporated as well, so.
So if we, we haven't done our budget work yet, we haven't, we don't really know what we want to spend on a consultant yet. So what, we can't really do the RFQ until we do our budgeting, right?
Well, you need to know what the numbers are going to be before you can do the budgeting.
Right, okay.
It's kind of.
But have, we, I mean, we've never had this before, so we need.
No, we need to see what it's going to cost, we need to know the opportunities, and, you know.
So we need this before our budget process, though.
It would help the budget process, because it'll give us the numbers we need for the projects. We have kind of estimates for replacements, but we don't know opportunities for grants, and we want to be realistic in what we can spend and who can help us with this, because they're going to, these companies are going to know which direction we need to go. They're going to give us the right advice.
And also, really, so many of these firms, for example, you know, again, we had the Siemens, you know, talk about what they do, so many of these firms take a look at monitoring and creating the cost savings by us incorporating our green infrastructure initiatives as well. So, and they also help us source grant funding and help us write grants as needed, because if we're a climate smart community, we're eligible for a number of these grants as well, so.
And we're going to look at where we are with some of the other grants we have qualified for.
And because really, as a village, we're too small, we just don't have the internal resources to implement a lot of these projects. So I think this really is an opportunity for our village to, you know, partner with a firm that can really bring us along and help us realize some of our green goals that we certainly have, so.
Yeah.
Justin, do you have a question?
I'm not sure. Are we going towards a motion? I wanted to follow up on what Trustee Keating was saying. You know, we've, we've only had less than six hours. The packet that we had before was just a one-line agenda item. This one said RFQ for green infrastructure. I have no idea what we're, is there a motion?
No, we're just, we're just giving, no, I mean, the idea is that you've got this, you're going to take a look at it, but the only motion would be to give direction to Scott, because there's other RFPs that other communities have already done regarding this for green infrastructure, and he maybe can help pull out some of the language, and in the interim, shoot it back to the board so we can digest some of this and customize the RFP that we want.
Is there a cost on that?
Well, he's our village engineer. Yeah.
This is a very vague, RFQs for green infrastructure sounds like could be quite a big area. I'd like to get more direction and have a better idea of what we're going on, if we direct our village engineer to do that.
I wish I had the packet from Siemens, wherever we had the, okay, so there's a number of firms that will take a look at the needs of a municipality or a school district. For example, Pittsburgh Central School District has monitoring done in assistance by Siemens, I believe. The town of Pittsburgh also has the same kind of oversight with the programs that they're trying to implement as well. So this is just really pulling together all of the initiatives that we're looking at. You know, again, you know, the furnace, we're looking potentially at solar down at the DPW that was identified by the Galisano Institute for Sustainability. We're looking at our windows that need to be redone. You know, there's a number of things that we have on the list that we've already discussed. the list that we've already discussed with the board. So it would be working with a firm that could comprehend, and also our streetlights, switching over to LED. And potentially a buyout program, which is a, a big deal, which could really help us. So these are a lot of wonderful initiatives, but we're very small, and so we don't really have the resources and house to do this. So it would be essentially working with a firm that could help us implement this, also help us source funding, grant, grant funding if possible, monitor it, and monitor it in terms of cost savings when we implement these initiatives. So this is kind of standard procedure. A lot of other villages are doing it. In fact, Brockport just did a whole buyout of their own streetlights, and I think they, they had a 38% savings already. So those are the kinds of initiatives that we're looking at and that we've discussed already with the board. You also have part of that as the Galisano report that was done very early on. So again, this is all draft form. It's just, we need to move forward, I think, as a village and start to look at incorporating resources to help us move forward with these initiatives, you know. We've been talking about this. So, well, I mean, I would just like to give direction to Scott to, to help us just.
Let's do that.
Okay, so I'll end, I'll make a motion that we direct Scott Harder, our village engineer, with, with possible input from our municipal attorney, to review the green infrastructure RFPs that we've certainly been able to gather and help us, how do we want to say, help us put together a green infrastructure RFP that will suit the needs of our village and help us meet the initiatives and goals for sustainability in our community.
Not to exceed what?
It sounded like there are a lot of templates already put together.
Yeah, I mean, it's a review, kind of giving us the language, so.
Scott, what do you think? What's, what's, what would this cost to put that, that work together?
Um, geez, I, I don't know. I have to admit, I'm not an expert in green infrastructure. So there'll be a little bit of learning on my part to understand what this is all about. Budget number for me and what I would charge?
Yeah, let's start with that, Scott.
I don't know, $500 to $1,000, somewhere in that vicinity.
Not to exceed $1,000?
Sure. Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's wise money for us to send to, start to get this language to move some of these initiatives forward.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a second from Trustee Keating. Roll call, please.
Trustee Likev?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. You've got a lot of projects. Okay, so next up. Yep. Oh, the tree legislation, public hearing, sort of a local law. Let me find that out. Do what, we've got some good input from Trustee Likev on that. And I also spoke with our attorney on that. So we are, I, I do think that at this point it may make sense to cancel the hearing. We would need a motion from the board to do so, because we do have some tree legislation on the books, and we also have this new tree legislation. And let's just step back and just take a look at that and melding that and what that would look like. I think, you know, you're right, that'd be prudent for us moving forward. So I would entertain a motion at this point simply to cancel the public hearing, so we can. But we, we'd be canceling it, because now are we doing the legislation?
No, you're not going to open and close it.
We don't need to.
You're just going to cancel it, because you're not, not adjourning the hearing. You're canceling it. There's going to be new legislation that combines the old, the new.
Okay.
And as yet undiscussed heritage tree protection.
Okay, great. So.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Likev?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Okay, because I think, I think that's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
No, thank you for, for bringing that up. Okay, then the next item up is we have correspondent, correspondence, excuse me.
Mayor Plummer, I'm sorry to jump in.
Yes, please do.
Can we do the proclamation that I sent to the board?
Oh, thank you for the reminder.
It's just so we can move forward with the Tree City. We need to recognize we conducted our, we did actually have Arbor Day events. We can just do that.
I know. Yeah, there's a proclamation that, that should be before you here.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation on Arbor Day. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Good move in.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Likev?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for reminding us to.
Want to get that.
Yep, nope, done and done. Okay. Next up, the correspondence regarding the properties located at 25 South Main Street. Do we have, we have to look at the letter?
Yep, that was included in their package.
And, and really, this is already on our, our list for, for, you know, looking at it for our codes. So we just, I think, just more than anything, we just received a correspondence. Yes, really.
I'll open the discussion. Thank you. I'd like to begin by saying that, and I don't know if it's Jermaine, but I, I, I've worked in that building for 20 years, so I have firsthand knowledge on it, but I do not have a relationship with the Rosen. So anything I'm saying, I'm declaring now that I, I didn't have any discussion with them about it. Regarding her request, I guess at first glance, the first thing I would, would like to say is that I would not be interested as a trustee in spot zoning or changing the zoning of this property, because it, it does not comply with the comprehensive plan and all the work that was done on that plan regarding the Main Street Business District. That being said, I understand what, what the points that she has made, and that I would consider discussing with the board or as a board, the extension of the grandfather clause that was granted to the building in the back, which is the building in question.
That's what you brought up, yes.
And for, to be discussed as a board with six months or a year to allow them to find a tenant and to extend the grandfather clause, rather than approach this as, let's just do a zoning change here.
I agree.
Hang on, can we have our attorney weigh in on, where's the grandfather clause?
You, you would have.
She referred to grandfather clause.
Well, hey, yeah, but there's no one in the building, and it's been vacant for more than six months.
Right. So you would have to change the zoning code to say that non-conforming uses cannot be continued unless they're within.
Continue.
Pick wherever you want to pick. But, but to do it the other way is what you refer to as zoning. So you have to do a uniform code change about extended zoning.
I see.
So to make it two years, or make it a year, or make it.
Year and a half, whatever.
Okay.
That could be for everything.
And you'd have to change that in the zone.
You'd have to change the definition of non-conforming use in the zoning code.
So should we bring that back to, to our code workshop?
Yeah.
I think, you know, because it merits, I think, a little more.
Do you agree with that, Steve?
Is that making sense?
Do you agree with that, what I just said?
Maybe it's on the list. We were, we kind of put it on hold from last time. What about three of these special?
Yeah. If they get a tenant.
You know what I mean?
It could apply for variance.
It's not a.
They're not going to give variance.
I don't think it's a, well, no, because we don't give use, use variance. I don't think anymore.
We have use variance, but they'll never get it.
Yeah, you wouldn't, to get it would be almost impossible. It's not a criteria necessary in order to approve it.
I mean, there's so much information, I think, that we would, at least I would like to hear, regarding what they have found the impetus to be to, to leasing or selling this property. Have they, you know, reduced the rent, for instance? I mean, what, what, what steps have they taken to reflect the, the problems that they have expressed? So I think that, you know, there's more information that we would need before, but I, I really, it does sound like spot zoning to me, which is.
Well, it does. Hold on, I want to push back a little bit on that, because this was a dentist office for years, decades? So, so what they're saying is, hey, we've had trouble renting it. Do, do you think you could just extend our grandfather clause? That doesn't at all sound like spot zoning. If, if it was making a decision about a space that had never been a dentist office, sure, that, that's spot zoning. But something that's been a dentist office for decades, during COVID, they're not able to rent it out, I don't see that that's spot zoning in the least.
It would be, it would be spot zoning to have only the extended, the extended definition applied to that lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
We'd have to uniformly apply it across all, all of those types of properties.
I haven't looked at the comprehensive plan, but this code does allow professional offices in the same situation.
Yep. The same situation of having been in there before.
No, no, as long as there's no frontage on the street, yeah.
Yeah, it's not visible. Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at the use list here, and officer clinic medical is not allowed even by special permit, the CBTDD.
Right, right, right. That, that's what we're talking about. The fact that it's not allowed. If you look at the next one up, I think it's a.
Officer.
It's a professional office, provided it's not on the street. So, I mean, I don't, Steve's got a question, but I don't, I'm not sure what the difference is between the two.
That would be something to drill down on, wouldn't it, to really mirror it further review. Yes, Steve?
I just want to mention that this same issue creates a problem over and over again. You have the same issues over and over again, because you have medical offices over there that are now illegal.
So, no.
You know what I mean? Or not, this is not performing. So if somebody moves out there or there's a space, you end up with the same issue as you do with Dr. Wilson.
They have the same zoning as Main Street? I don't believe so.
The same, they're not allowed medical offices over there either.
By special permit. Isn't that VGB?
No.
Oh, no, that's MUES.
MUES?
Yes, you end up with the same issue.
So we need to look at that.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a, further, there's got to be a zoning workshop, you know what I mean? To come up with a viable solution that works for, best for, you know, the village again for the potential.
And in the meantime, how do we reach out to Ms. Rosen?
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I would say that you reach out to her and tell her that this is going to be the subject of the code workshop, and at least one trustee is interested in knowing what difficulties they've had, what they perceive as the problems, and that she's free to come to the workshop and tell us.
I, I can say before we had a handful of those remarks about that from people wanting to use it as a dentist office or, or some sort of medical office, and then, and I told them they couldn't.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I don't know what difference.
I understand what you just said.
The people who inquired, it was a dentist office before.
Right.
The mailers had called me, and said, I got a, a possible potential buyer, but they want to use the back office or lease the office for a medical facility, another dentist. In fact, I've had three different calls where people want to use the dentist office specifically, and I had to tell them that it's not, it's not allowed to use under the zone.
But it's one address, as I recall. It's not, it's not subdivided in any way, so it's one address.
One address with two buildings.
So the one issue might be that whatever is determined would, would apply to the front building as well as the back building, and that's the issue.
No.
No? I'm just trying to understand.
That's how you write it.
You, you, you've already got the differentiation in use for, for professional offices. They can only be in a, in a back line, not on the street.
So this building could be separated and have different zoning.
It can be professional offices. It just can't be a dental office, for whatever the reason, the reasoning was. So.
It seems a reasonable request to discuss the grandfather clause and to.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Yes, I agree.
So the action item, okay, so just to move forward in the interest of time, the action item then is, Steve, let's get back with, with Mrs. Rosen. We'll let her know the outcome. That it is already on the list for a code workshop. She's more than welcome to come to the workshop. And, and, you know, we also want to find out why she wasn't able to rent it.
That, that's something that I, I feel pretty strongly about, that we, it doesn't matter. So I played that out, and I think, why, why do we need to know why she's had a hard time renting it? If, if she gives an answer, it, it doesn't matter. If she can find a tenant in two weeks that, you know, or two months that says, hey, I've got a dentist office that wants to be in there, great. I, I, I just, it feels very unfriendly to our businesses to say, well, tell, tell us why you couldn't fill it. Why, why do we need to go over that? It doesn't make any difference. I'm not directing this at you.
Yeah, I'm just going to let her know it's on the table.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's, okay, so we're just going to let her know then. Okay, so if you want to reach out to her, maybe you can, aren't you both? All right, so we have that done. Moving on, let's see, where we, oh, the hiring of a part-time, what, what are you looking at?
Did everybody receive the resume?
A what?
Did you guys receive the resume?
I believe so.
No?
We couldn't see your resume.
It's been a lot of, wearing a lot of hats this week.
Right. There is a resume. We do have personally.
Why don't you go grab the.
Get it for the board.
Yeah.
Let's do it after the break. How's that?
Yeah, why don't we adjourn for a little break real quick? Is that what we're thinking?
No, no, let's keep going till eight thirty.
Oh, you want to go to eight thirty? Okay, well, we're, we're on a roll anyway. So why don't we move on quickly to the union contract then?
Okay, why don't we go to the union contract? It's pretty straightforward.
My question always every year on this is what, what's different from the last one? It's hard to review without the last one.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Take care, Jim.
Few requests. They were changing on the starting salaries, which we expected. They brought it up to actually salaries that we have started new employees at. They asked initially for 8% increases every year for the next three years. We negotiated that down and actually have it scaling down if the board sees that. They asked for an increase in the workman's foreman salary from additional dollar to $2. They wanted call-in pay for if they come in, they get called for, let's say, plowing, and they only end up working two hours if they get four hours' pay.
Do we want to peg the cost, peg it to a cost of living index?
No, I think they're happy where it is, and we're very happy where it is. And this doesn't, this doesn't exclude the village's capability of interviewing, giving more than the salary that we agreed to in the startings. And we've been doing it.
I just don't want to overcommit.
No, we're not overcommitted. I will agree that we are not overcommitted. There was give and take, and I think the village actually came out ahead in this with some of their requests. They were looking for healthcare, for infidelity after retirement. There was a lot of things that we.
I think getting this far into the back and forth negotiations probably was more suited to an executive session.
Well, then I apologize.
I mean.
Yeah, we're getting into some of the nitty, a little bit, yeah.
Jeff did send something.
Yeah, but it isn't what Dan was looking for.
It's not redlined with the changes.
Yeah, I never received a redline.
It's helpful, though. Thank you.
Yeah, it is helpful.
Thank Dorothy. She sent it to me.
Okay. It's in a separate. So then do we want to go into executive session on the two matters, the hiring and the union contract?
You can.
I mean, I, I was just talking about to negotiate.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there anything else? Brain, I'm trying to.
Actually, those are the last two items.
This is.
What about the public hearing on the LWRP stuff?
Oh, you need to schedule that.
Let's, why don't we do that right now?
Totally forgot about that.
And I have a question on the, on some of the language. Do you have that language?
Yep.
Is it the back?
Yeah, we need to set the public hearing.
Union contract?
No, this is, this is the proposed local law for the LWRP.
So Jeff, on the second to last page of that proposed language, under H. So Jeff, on the second to last page of that proposed language, under H1. Yeah. Got it?
121 hyphen five, period H, period one.
Yep. So in the last part of H1, it says such action shall not be undertaken unless the planning board makes a written finding with respect to the proposed action that, and then it ends, it feels like there's some language missing there.
Yeah, A, B, C, and D, but only changing one.
Oh, so, so that refers to 21031 dash two A?
No, no, no. No. 125 hyphen five, period H, period, parentheses, period one, shall not read. So that's all one. And then under that are subparaphracts A, B, C, and D.
Okay, okay. So it's not the complete code, it's just a part that's going to change.
And perhaps you're correct, does not a change that would be any more restrictive. Maybe Dorothea, when we publish, will put in A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
So what's there now? So, because it looks like it's incomplete.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's all changing.
Just for clarity, when we publish, when we publish it, we'll put in A, B, C, and D.
Okay, thank you.
For clarity.
Use more context.
Yeah, yes, clarity. Okay, so any dates?
Yes, planning.
Planning, then I need the second meeting in January, I believe that is January 24th, or 26th.
I just lost my battery.
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
Okay, January 26th, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. So moved.
With the addition of the.
Proposed by Dan.
As amended by Dan.
Yep, all seconded.
We have a second from Renee. Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're cruising now. So, well, we could do the minutes, I guess.
Yes. Do you want to see if the young ladies have a reason?
Yes, hi.
Can you guys design?
Oh, yeah, we just need like a paper of the minutes to design. Yes, or at least like the meeting agenda.
Oh, we can do that.
We can. You have been so patient. Because we're going to be going into an executive session, which means.
We still have a couple of public things to do.
Yeah, we still have the minutes.
And number three.
But also the, the stuff.
And the committee, yeah.
And the diversity training we should discuss in public as well.
Okay, so that's a number, I am too.
And member items.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we, then why don't we do the, jump back up to the short-term rental legislation review committee guidelines?
Oh, yes, we start to.
Yeah, see, we were jumping around, so I lost.
Is there a requirement that you have to stay until the end of the meeting? Okay, never mind then, okay.
We'll try and be quick.
We're moving along now.
For your sake.
I know, I know, my goodness.
Yeah, for their sake.
I know.
Aren't I nice?
Yeah, of course. I have a question.
Okay, so we have, yep, so we have that.
I was glad to see on the short term that they, that included in there is one of the owners of a, of a short-term rental place. I propose Erin Eater, I think she'd be great.
We don't hear anybody in place yet.
Yeah.
So, okay, first of all, this is going to be by resolution, not local law. It's not a standing committee, it's going to be just a one law. So it'll be the usual committee with parameters, one of the parameters you all decide, mayor appoint, will you confirm, approve, I should say.
Okay, so the action then tonight would be, you know, we figure out kind of what we want.
You know, there was Lily had a policy statement. If anybody else has any kind of thoughts about why we're doing this, the policy statement, whatever it is that you want to put in as a wherefore paragraph that substantiates why we're doing this whole thing, that'll be good, and then the resolution will be, whatever we, we'll set up the committee, we'll talk about the guidelines, we'll talk about selecting a chair, what they did, and we'll talk about their job.
How many members will be included, what the makeup of the board might look like?
Yeah, yeah. Willie, I mean, if you want to, want to insist on, like Lily's email laid out, you know, numbers and thoughts about at least one businessman and one business person, I apologize, and at least one owner of a long-term rental, I mean, that would have to be in the resolution. So they get the ultimate guidance about what they're supposed to do, and then they're, give them a deadline, I know there was some back and forth about what was the right timeframe. So that's how I see this.
My only question is, I assume it was an accident that I was left off of this?
Yeah, I included you on when I responded.
On a later one?
Yeah, yeah. Those are the only two back and forth. I think it was just Lily's email and just mine.
Yeah, so the way that happened was Lily's email, Renee responded, left you off, then handed you, I forwarded Renee's first one.
Okay, thanks.
So that's, yeah.
So you're in the live now.
It's a simple mistake. Okay, got it.
I didn't notice either when I replied.
No more plausible than I ability for you.
So what are our next steps? Two, two of us gave a little feedback, do, what else do we need to do here?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think that March 1st, I kind of agree with you, Renee, that, you know, I think March 1st might be a little too quick.
Okay.
You know.
I just threw that out there to.
Yeah.
Adopt it tonight, or adopt the resolution tonight, March may have been doable, but now it's going to be the end of January.
Jeff would draft the resolution for us based on the input that we give to him this evening, and then bring it back to the board.
Right.
You know, for maybe some tweaking.
For a deadline, give it to the board, you get it, it's not like a law, the law doesn't have to age.
Yeah.
You give it.
Make amendments if you need to do.
Make amendments to it, and then you adopt the resolution.
And we'll set dates at that time.
Of the deadline for, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's likely to be a different time. They might come to the board and say, we've gotten this far, but we need some more work.
Sure, absolutely.
So out.
They're not going to come off because they didn't get it.
Yeah, right. TikTok, right.
Okay, so do you have enough to go?
I don't.
You don't have.
So, you know, I need to know what the numbers, the consistency, the job, when it's due. I think that may be, if there's more, I will just email, but I think I need a consensus from the board, that's why we probably can't do this by email.
Yeah.
I think I have to have a consensus about those items, and then I can, and you can email me your thoughts on, on the why is a wherefore, so the where as paragraph, otherwise I have to freelance.
Yes, I mean, I, I already said this in my email, but what are we asking them to do? Are we asking them to determine whether we want to regulate them? Is that what the big question is? Or?
Or the extent of the regulation, sir.
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I thought that was what you were asking.
So now that we have this committee, what is it that we are looking for from this committee to bring back to the board? So, you know, part and parcel of what I was thinking too, is that part of their job may be to survey existing, you know, existing legislation. You know, for example, you, you have the one, what was it, Tom Victor?
Yeah, Tom Victor.
I found Cornwall and Hudson, you know, so the role of the board would certainly be to, they don't have to write any legislation, but just maybe survey existing legislation, and they understand our village and what the needs of our village are, maybe we define some of those parameters, and that's part of the mission statement. So maybe what they can do is make some recommendations from the legislation that they have reviewed, that could be part of it, back to the board to maybe help us, you know, move forward on legislation, or do we want them to just make a flat-out recommendation initially? Nah, we don't need anything. Do they have that option? Do you know, do you know what I mean? Like, how, what is the leeway for this committee?
Right, they might do the research and say, we don't think that the village of Pittsburgh needs regulation for AirBnBs.
Yeah, because, I mean, at the end, they were looking for some type of recommendation back to the board, so we can.
Just looking for a range, a wide range of options.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, they don't have to make decisions for us.
No, no. Just recommendations.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe they present a couple of options.
Yep.
Okay. Jeff's taking notes.
And do we want them to look at our comprehensive plan, or do we want to do that and determine whether this, our short-term rental, we keep saying AirBnBs, so our short-term rentals?
Our SCRs.
Yes, are they considered in the comprehensive plan?
Sounds like a disease.
I see it as direction for them to understand what is the basis for all the decisions that our board makes and the PCBA makes and the HB. Every, that, that document is our guide, and all of the boards refer to it.
Right, so what, what are we telling them to do with the comprehensive plan?
They're just to have a copy of it.
We just want them to look at it, okay.
It's a resource for the committee.
To understand, yeah.
Along with survey, surveying local legislation, we would, or existing legislation, we would like them to look at the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it's a resource.
Yes, it's our guide, and it should be theirs as well.
Be clear about that, so, since we've already done the surveys and the, anyway.
Well, and I think they should be able to review whatever else they think is important.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, and any other appropriate documents, you know, just.
And they can have a little bit of access to you as well, if they have questions, as a resource.
What do we usually do? I've served a lot of committees that never had access to it.
Jeff, wouldn't the, the direction would be consultation with appropriate resources as needed, or?
They can make requests for resources.
Request, yeah, that's what it is, request for appropriate resources as needed.
Yeah.
And then we say, I want you to spend $20,000 on a survey, you know, or something.
They should request to us, the resources that they feel are necessary, if this is not a blank check.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Yeah, fair enough.
Well, I so far have them reviewing what other resources are available. So that means to me that it's already existed.
Okay.
Oh, that's true.
Shouldn't cost money.
Right.
And if the people need to cost, it does need to cost money, then they come to us and ask for it.
Okay, you don't want to be able to talk to me without talking to you.
No, that was a bad idea on my part.
Which way?
That they don't have direct access to you.
But they, and they can make requests that, you know, to board liaison, hang on, because I like to give a liaison to the board, so they can make a request to the board liaison to say, you know, we'd like to talk to the municipal attorney, we have a couple of things that we're kicking around here.
Yeah.
You know, because that's really the role of the liaison, you know, to help monitor and make sure that they're coming along with things, and get the things that they need to complete their directive. How are we doing, Jeff? We're getting there? We've got the number of members, has the board decided what feels comfortable?
Five to seven felt comfortable, plus a business owner, plus.
Yeah, I like that. A range, you know.
Wait, wait, I thought those were included in your numbers, five to seven total.
Five to seven, otherwise you're up to nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
Yeah, I liked Lily's.
Five or seven.
That includes a business owner and a short-term rental property owner.
Yeah.
Now, the business owner and short-term rental property owner do not need to be village residents, because otherwise, I'm not sure there are.
No, right, no.
But the other committee, the other committee members should be.
Yeah, they should definitely be, yeah, and it's, Lily's identified them as village residents, and should be.
Right.
Yes.
So we have five village residents, one business owner, one.
STR owner.
STR owner.
Thanks for the acronym, that's helpful.
Do not have to.
Mayor Plummer, I think, Steve, hold it.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Steve, I'm sorry.
I know, I was focusing on.
Just, just a request in this whole function, one thing I'd really like to see in the legislation or whatever we do is the requirement of registration for rentals.
Okay, that'll be one of the things we talk about.
That can fall out of it, yeah.
Thanks.
Keep track, because we really don't know.
Right, we talked about that for any rental.
And they've seen our P schedule already, which is funny, that it's been in the P schedule forever.
Okay, so duly noted, thank you.
They're going to make broad recommendations about what we should do with STRs.
And then we then take it from there and craft the legislation.
Yeah, after reviewing, yeah.
Yeah, so we could, like Lily said, if they, if, we're not making a call now whether we want to legislate these and regulate them, we're, that's not part of the purpose at this point, it's to gather information, come back to us, and then we will, yes, we're going to draft legislation, no, we're not going to, or regulations.
They may come, what I, my point was, they might come to the board and say, we've researched, we've gone through it all, and we don't think that it's really necessary in the village. That might be their recommendation, we don't know what the recommendation may be.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think, I think we should give that, the group that leeway, certainly, because, you know, that really would be their function. Also, you know, if they are reviewing other legislation, they might say, you know, we do think it needs to be regulated, and we've also seen in some of these pieces of legislation things that might really be applicable in the, in our village. So I think we should give the, the group that latitude in terms of what they bring back to us.
Want the report written or?
Written, yes.
I didn't hear, is there one of, one of the people possibly a current owner of the union?
Yes.
So I have a very broad thing here, it's reviewing this, reviewing that, and then they're going to make recommendations as to what type of controls, if any, the board ought to adopt with regard to STRs.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have any other thoughts on that, that may be something that we've left out just in terms of our?
Not, not even like it that broad, no.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I think, you know, this is.
Full range of what's to do.
Yeah, and it's kind of, you know, new territory, you know, so I think.
Come across something we could.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
I think that as a, I'm hoping that as a board, and it demonstrates this board of trustees is responsive to our, our residents and with their concerns, like approach the board with their concerns, and we are reacting, we are answering their questions, and hoping to take action based on concerns they brought to the board.
That's exactly the kind of stuff I'm looking at.
For the whereas.
For the whereas paragraph.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's where we're going.
If you have any other, I've noted that one, Lily.
Whereas we're.
But if you have any other thoughts about what, what might be a good basis for what we're doing.
Okay, well, considering the hour, we're going to be interactive and get back if you want some of our inputs, so, you know, just to keep things moving. Okay, we, we have enough to, you know, fuel the fire. Okay, thank you, all right. Where did we leave off? Let's see, we, well, we, oh, minutes, yeah, we can do the minutes.
And then member items. And then member X.
Member items, and then we'll switch over, okay.
We're almost done.
We're almost there.
We're almost there.
I promise you. This is one of the shortest meetings we've ever had.
You picked a good one.
You did, honestly.
That doesn't mean it hasn't been boring, but it.
Oh, it's a thrilling minute, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make a motion to appro, I did send a correction that I sent in last time for July 25th.
Oh, sure.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Then I will make a motion to approve the July 25th.
Second.
Minutes as corrected.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
I can't do the first one because I wasn't present.
Okay.
Yep, you were present, me. Okay, trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair, refused. Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
I'll make a motion on August, to accept the August 29th minutes.
Oh, second.
That's just me, Lisa, and Renee.
Yeah, okay. Trustee Lightkit, refused. Trustee Lanfair. Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Hi, we all did, aye.
Yeah.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
We're all standing, aye.
Aides.
Okay. What's next?
September 29th, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Awesome. Five thirty?
There's two different.
Yes, that's the workshop, the five thirty.
I was not, I was out of town.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now the regular.
I made the motion to approve the minutes of September 29th, the regular meeting.
Second.
Roll call. Okay, trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes. More to come.
Woo-hoo, all right, we've proved through that.
We've been trying to get July 25th.
Okay, so then let's go right into member items so we can finish the public portion of our meeting.
No, I think we should.
Okay. Okay, anybody have member items?
Yeah.
Everybody does, wow, okay. Okay, we'll start, we'll start at this end, Jeff.
I just wanted to follow up on the street striping on Main Street, I know we've had some discussion about that. There was a change from Nice Dot about the striping. It seems like it's kind of a done deal now, but I, it seems like it's perhaps not consistent with some of the traffic calming that we've talked about in the past and with the code that describes the parking in the village. So I'm wondering if an appropriate next step might be to recommend a, to try to get a meeting with someone in Nice Dot, perhaps Kevin Bush, or somebody else, or any other ideas that people may have to follow up on that item.
Yeah, we talked about this in our last, last meeting, and you did, you have a follow-up, you did, you have met with him.
With Kevin Bush?
Not Kevin Bush.
No.
You met with the project manager.
Oh, gosh, I'm blanking.
Yeah. They're leaving it for now.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the response was, we are leaving it for now and open to restoring the parking later. As you. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Welcome to the world of Nice Dot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, really the response was, I think, what my, my reading of the response was, we're not going to deal with it now, we can't do anything over the winter anyway. Let's, and they're coming back in the spring, so, and then our response was, thank you because we're not going away. So, I mean, we're with you on this, so we're chipping away with them, yeah.
Because we've got some basic streets legislation.
Yeah.
Just really briefly, any updates on budget information, budget information from different departments, capital plans? If we're trying to enter in the.
We canceled the last meeting because Zach was out sick.
Sure.
We had illness.
Two meetings, one, because the whole office had COVID, and then we just lost it with Zach.
Yeah.
We're hoping to be reviewing next week. A lot of capital plans for the area of Main Roads is all coming from his department, so I'm waiting for those updates.
Yeah, he has to catch up.
Yeah, that's all part of looking at reserves and everything that the board is going to need to look at. Actually, as I said, there's hopefully a plan of attack going into your very first meeting.
Thank you.
So the short answer is there's no substantial update because due to illness of staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that it for you?
Yeah.
Okay, Lily, member items, please? Yes, and I'm very, I apologize. Do you want me to come back to you? Email here, I can just say it, I'm pretty much, this is as, from my position as liaison to the HPP, I received an email from a member of the HPP that has a professional background and expertise and is willing, ready, and able to supply to the board the training that they need, the specific training. And also Barrow Architecture also has a program that is specifically, that has been tailored for boards, and because one of the board members used to be an owner of Barrow but is no longer, has retired for several years, it would not be a conflict. But I know that some members have gone to the Landmark Society for some training. I don't know that the training was specific to the needs of the village of Pittsford, so this person on the board is offering their services.
I can speak to that, I can speak to the training that was received, because there's already another training.
Okay, but some members are going, but not all?
It's, let me, let me just give you the whole story on this. It is completely customized to the village, and the first training, they had the first training session, and the agreement was that they would be recorded, so any, any board member can go back in if they missed it, they can go back, they also can ask questions based on the first session that they've had. I believe the chair of HPP has scheduled an additional session, and this will be ongoing. In other words, it's completely tailored to what our needs are for our village, and that was, that was part of the agreement, that's my understanding, and maybe you could follow up with Jeff Pollak, he's in Europe right now, but he'll be back next week, and he can give you maybe additional information, but that was my understanding from the discussion.
Okay, I would like to share something that was, she shared with me, so I think that it's, and it is germane to what you just said. It has not been offered to all board members, that's a private training for our HPP only, but the Landmark Society is a non-governmental agency whose area of expertise is not in the understanding and implementation of preservation ordinances or governmental policy, but in public advocacy for preservation. So when the training has been offered at preservation conferences, the presenters have been experienced architects, lawyers, or SHPO, which is the governmental agency which has the authority and experience to make approvals. So have you shared this with the chair of the HPP, and could you also forward this to, can you forward this to us, that correspondence? That would be great, and then let's, we'll follow up on that. Okay, I think that's important that we do follow up on it, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. Okay, great. Any other member items from you? Any, any other items from you?
No, that's me.
Okay, okay, next up.
I've got a few.
Okay.
There was talk from our last executive, or executive session about having to process a motion on one of the staff members and a pre-existing injury that we were going to do at this meeting in terms of going on disability.
Oh, the leave, meaning the medical leave.
Oh, medical leave?
Disability leave.
Disability leave.
Did we have to do that at this meeting?
Good question, we do have the request, and I totally blanked out on it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Do you need to go deal with something? Do you need to?
No, I think I can just present it to the board.
Yeah, why don't we, circling back on that.
Yeah.
What date, effective what date?
We go to our meeting on 12/5. No, when we had our emergency meeting, 12/9.
What was the date of our emergency meeting? I lost my battery.
Yeah, it was Friday the ninth.
Wouldn't go effective to the date when the employee was first out with his injury? Because she only, that employee only came back for a day and a half and could not do the job.
So we go back to the 29th of November.
Now, why don't we do it as the date of the request?
I think that's more appropriate.
Well, she was sent, she was.
The date of the request, which.
Yeah, so the request was made on that, was it made on, was sent home on Tuesday?
She was sent home on Tuesday.
She came in on Wednesday, she came in on Wednesday.
She.
Was it Wednesday or Thursday?
No, it was later.
Thursday?
I think it was Thursday.
So it would have been Thursday the request was made?
Thursday the first or Thursday the eighth?
The eighth.
The eighth. Well, we had our, we had our meeting on.
The ninth.
The ninth.
Right, but we.
No, the request was on the, on the first.
Was it?
Yeah, it was on the first.
You have the paper, you have.
Yeah, I have the paper, I apologize to the board, I totally.
Pursuing of whatever the date is.
Yes, I believe it was the first.
So we can, we can say from the date of the request in writing.
Okay. And I assume I can tell the employee's name because they have to make that on the record. Joan Rule has an injury that is affecting her ability to work for the village at this time, and I proceed in follow-up to her request to go out on a disability leave slash medical leave. She's been given a note from her doctor that she's unable to work, so she's awaiting surgery and what comes of that, so she put in that request, so I need the board's authorization to grant that request.
So the disability leave is 12 weeks, up to 12 weeks, as is convenient for the board and the village, and requires the board to continue what it has paid, been paying for medical insurance for that period, and that's the obligation of the board, for the village, I should say.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Eight, are they granting the full 12 weeks?
Yes, well, I said ask, ask, up to 12 weeks.
Up to 12 weeks, I just want to make sure we didn't need to.
No, up to, what I said was up to 12 weeks and this is convenient.
Okay.
For the village.
Gotcha. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, down on that one?
Okay.
Okay, so diversity, inclusion, and belonging training, so I sent some alternatives today. The easiest one is, is a self-guided one on LinkedIn, and you just do it on, and you watch videos and click through them, and you get a certificate at the end. That one is $35, so.
Per person, per person going.
So my, my initial, there, it gets much more expensive from there and much more time-consuming from there. So my thought is just have one person do it and see how that goes, and maybe you could do it, or you could choose somebody to do it.
That's fine, I know, I did something similar.
Yeah.
And I found it almost repetitive to the sexual harassment.
Yeah, it probably will be.
And I didn't think that was sufficient? Sufficient, I really feel there needs to be open discussion, the give and take, like you have with sexual harassment.
Yep.
To make it meaningful.
Yep.
To get it done, that would be an avenue, but I think we need to look at doing more than just getting it done.
Yeah, so what I'm proposing is, is do the video.
Oh, just to see.
Just hold on.
I'm just talking to myself, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, because I'm proposing a video and, and a live session as well, but I just want to make sure we have the right video.
Okay, I'll take one.
So I'll ask you to do it, it's not very long.
No, I have no.
And I'll, I'll work with you on it, and then if we determine that's the right one, then we'll have everybody do it, and then we'll schedule an in-person session as well.
And by in-person, you meant number three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've, I got a couple candidates on that, and we'll talk about that.
Okay, and all of those candidates are in that ballpark, you said roughly 1800, okay.
Is that something, and maybe this is further discussion, like the sexual harassment, we brought in the in-house trainer, they trained me to do the training, is this something that you know, okay, and I'm not trying to say it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at down the road because I don't think there should be a one and done, I think it should be something done.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure we handle it appropriately.
Sure, sure, sure. The next, safety improvements at Village Hall, just want to make sure we keep.
We just met with Captain Alberti.
And I emailed with the gentleman.
Okay, great, so Deputy Thurston is going to schedule a time to meet with Dorothea and come out and walk through, which we've never done before.
No, we have not.
I mean, they made sure our panic button didn't work, now it does.
Yeah, or we did discover that, the panic button, apparently, batteries, and nobody knew.
So they're, they'll talk about all that stuff, about how to handle.
Yeah, and actually, you know, the discussion is, is pretty comprehensive when they come through.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've emailed.
So I didn't need to jump in, I just happened to be at that meeting, so I'm sorry.
So they're going to come in and do a review and then present to us?
Uh, no, I think they do a walkthrough with whoever in the office that you want to participate, and so the Monroe County Sheriff's Office will give an assessment and guidance on how to make things.
And then, then we can write up, you know, the recommendations that are made.
Come and provide us the, I don't know, well, you'll find out, but I don't think they're coming to a board meeting to present this.
Yeah, I, like I said, I emailed him, I'm waiting the response back, and once I can get that scheduled, I'll let him know.
Okay, also wanted to keep momentum on remote participation in meetings, I didn't know where we were with that.
We can bring it back to the board and put it on the next agenda, you know, because I was thinking even tonight, with the bad weather, you know, we could have just.
Been great.
And, well, not just for, we can all walk, I'm more concerned about you who has to drive home and you who has to drive home, you.
Although right now, you two could be remote, the way, right?
I can be remote anytime I want.
Jeff can, too, it's just the board can't.
I could be remote, but then the board's going to have to run all the electronics.
Right, but I meant, he could be remote.
No, that's not a problem at all, if you need to be remote, I can.
Well, it's just by the way that that can't be remote.
And then the last thing was, I'm still in favor of a letter to the villagers about 75 Monroe and giving them an update, I've written the draft of this several months ago, sent many requests for progress on it and not been told anything, so.
There's been limited progress on it, and there's been a few other things that have obviously been needed to be addressed, but it's not, not, not thrown away at all, not thrown away.
There's been no response whatsoever.
Sorry about that, sorry about that.
So.
My call.
There is nothing more important to me than this, I've written a draft of it, all you have to do is edit it, show it to our attorney, show it to us, and it goes, and what's troubling to me is that I've asked five, six, seven times, and just, this is the first time that I've heard anything about it, and I think that's not what the people